The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
Yes, we have our superintendent's update. I'll turn it over to Dr. Maginfield.
Thank you. If we turn to our calendar, it is almost September. The district building is going to be closed on Labor Day, September 1st. I keep calling it Memorial Day, so that tells me I missed the summer somewhere along the line. The first day of school for most students will be September 2nd. For Preble High School, it will be September 15th. And that was just announced, but we will have many places where that will be announced and announced because we want to be certain that parents are aware, so that if they need to make alternative plans, or if we have students who are looking to continue in activities and things, that they will be well aware that that has changed due to the fire. September 8th is our teaching and learning work session here, beginning at 5:30 at the district office, immediately followed by the organizational work session after, and then that is also here in this very room. And then we end the month rounded out on September 22nd with our regular board meeting at 5:30 here in the boards room in room 331. And that's our September calendar. I'm sure there are many other things as we kick off fall sports, I think, next week. Actually, this week on Thursday, if I'm not mistaken.
East West game.
East West game, and I believe Preble is hosting as well. So there's a lot of excitement going on in the district, you know, as the calendars at Preble have not stopped for the students. And I think that's very important. The activities and athletics have not stopped. So we will continue to proceed with that. So that's the calendar. And then I think the next thing, we do have a discussion item, and I would invite Alan Wagner to join us in response to something Dr. Wagner had asked in regard to equalization aid. So Wagner, Wagner.
Can't go wrong.
Where would you be without us if we did?
I know. I'm grateful. Thank you both.
I asked the question last time, in particular, because there had just been something in the paper and news, and it sounded like we got a bonus of $6 million in our district that we could then apply in a prudent way to the needs of our students. But I know my colleagues here and I know that's not quite the full picture. So in terms of our public, I was hoping Mr. Wagner could explain it to our public, what's that actually about?
As you know, July 1st was the estimation of our equalized aid for the following school year, and that amount was $139 million. And again, there was a $6 million increase from last year's. And again, a lot of what was in the press was that, you know, what are we going to do with that additional $6 million as far as spending it? Really, the additional $6 million of equalized aid, what it does for the district, it will, it will help to lower the tax levy and lower the property taxes. But again, it will not provide any additional dollars for programs, or equipment, or anything else else at this time. Now, it is a projection, and it probably will be fairly close to that amount. But again, you know, it did some, sounds like, and again, it is good to have dollars for the taxpayers, but again, it does not provide additional dollars for spending within the district.
Because I think when the public sees additional state aid, they automatically assume that it goes to the district and we can use it in the classroom. But the way the legislature and the governor structured state aid is that most of it goes directly to reduce your tax levy and does not go into the classroom. I think people need, I'm glad you brought that up, Chris, because I think sometimes people think, boy, we're swimming in additional cash, and that's not true.
I personally have no problem with that relief to our taxpayers. We're all property taxpayers here. I just did not like the way it was laid out. I felt it was false and misleading to our public. And it made us look like we have all this money, what are we complaining about?
Yeah, right.
So, Celeste?
And then, you know, $6 million is what percentage of 260, what is our budget?
250 million dollars.
250 million dollars. So that would be, it doesn't come to us, but even if it did, $6 million is not even 1% of, 7%?
About 2.5%.
3.5%.
So it's a couple of percent.
Right, 3.5% of 250 million dollars. So.
So we would take.
2.5.
Yes, but I mean, you know.
I think, I think the problem is that when, when the paper puts these numbers out there, $6 million sounds like a lot of money, when you put it against 250 million dollars.
It's money, but it's not as much money as if $6 million came into my family's budget. So.
And the reason the district did give a $6 million increase is really because a lot, the calculation is based on your property value per student. And that's why you saw, you see districts whose enrollments are not going up are losing equalized aid. We have some districts within our area who are losing state aid. And again, a lot of that has again to do with the increasing enrollment the district has had. It certainly helps us in the revenue limit, and it also helps us get additional equalized aid. And again, even if it's for the property tax, that it is better to, there are some districts who are getting 15% reductions. Their levies will definitely go up.
All right. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. The last thing I have are student accessories. One of the things that I have been doing, that I started last fall and hope to continue throughout the year, is positive comments that we receive either in Facebook, or letters from students to staff, and so forth. And I think today I'd like to highlight some things that have come our way as a result of the comments in response to what the district has been placing on the restoration website in response to the Preble fire. I think that if you read the Press Gazette on Sunday, there was acknowledgement of how important that website has been. And I have to give Lori Blaisley, our communications director, a shout out for that. Really keeping people informed has been the priority during this very difficult time. There have been people working diligently at the site and certainly behind the scenes, but I think what Lori has really done is afforded access so people could really keep in the loop. And I think students wanting to know what's going on and so forth, and staff obviously very concerned, and the community very concerned, and they've rallied well. But I'll just share a couple that have come our way. This actually came from a teacher who talked about, "Happy Green Bay area public schools are taking the time to restore post-fire Preble the right way. I hope to teach another 25 years. My lungs." Thank you. And then another one came from a community member that focused on, "I'm impressed by the updates being provided and the work being done to ensure communication is happening during this very unpredictable time." Thank you. I appreciate it. Another person wrote in and said, "A big thank you to everyone working so hard to get the school ready." Another person stated, "Thank you everyone for helping with the school. You guys are great. Thank you to all who are cleaning up this massive mess." Another posted, as she must have looked at pictures, "Looking good." And then another commented, "Thanks for the posting. Sometimes the not knowing is worse than the reality." So again, we've been very diligent in our communication, and obviously the appreciation has come our way. And just a follow-up, I know that many, all the teachers have been in, and I think because of the communications that have come from the Preble administration and so forth, really letting them know what to expect as well. And I think that's been helpful. And hopefully, we'll, we will bring things back as best we can. And extraordinary work on the part of people on every level, and obviously the communication has been there to support that. And tomorrow, I think we'll have a press conference at 2:30, 2 o'clock, to kind of go over more details and more gratitude.
Where's that?
That will be at Preble.
Outside again?
It'll be where there's that paved seating area, right in the circle. There's some benches and then pavers. So we'll drag this circle. You'll see it as you're going out. We're going to hold it there.
Unless it rains.
Well, then it will be our, for some of us, our pre-ice bucket challenge. We'll just get wet further and see how that looks for our next round. So that concludes it.
Thank you. Next, we have our legal update. Melissa Field Coller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight's legal update is timely with respect to new legislation that was passed by the state legislature and signed by the governor at the end of the last legislative cycle. And this is 2013 Wisconsin Act 257, which repealed the minimum number of instructional days, but left intact the amount of instructional minutes for our students. And the memo that I provided to you outlines the number of instructional minutes required based on the level of the student, and then includes, for your definition as well, what can be included in those instructional minutes and what cannot. So you had the memo. If you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Pretty straightforward.
And just to clarify, I think had this bill not been passed last year, our approach to making up the nine days that Preble High School will miss would have had to be incredibly different. We would have had to make up nine days instead of having the flexibility to add minutes and things like that to the days.
Vastly different approach.
Yeah.
You're not implying by that comment that time won't be made up?
No, I'm just saying that it's allowing us a lot more flexibility. Otherwise, we would have had to add nine days to the student schedule without having the flexibility to potentially.
We have to add the hours, but not that they.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Melissa. Next, we have our intercity student council report. Turn that over to Lokeen.
Sure. So for high school news, I think you guys all know if you were just talking about the Preble fire. Last week, has a result spontaneous combustion. Despite this, that despite this, Preble counters and activities continue. And we had the Preble football meet the team at night last week, and it really showed that the community rallied together. And Preble golf also started the season at Washington County. They took 5th place. And for Southwest High School, they just recently are finishing up their new field, their field. And for West High School, East and West had a battle of the bands at Jolene's Alcoholic Center. And East High School recently had a new sign for the Bynars Institute, which reflects its great history and curriculum. And for upcoming events, there's registration for all high schools in open house as well. And for Z games for football, like you guys just said, this week on Thursday, the 20th versus. Preble faces off against Ashwabanon. East faces off against West. Southwest faces off against Mantua. And there's a blood drive battle at Neville Public Museum with East and West High School on August 29th to see who can dump their most blood. And that concludes our session.
If I can just interject. Kennedy, are you the student that President Obama wrote the note to your teacher, excusing you?
Oh.
From missing school?
I remember that.
Which, yes. When he was at Southwest High School, your father took you, and he wrote you a note.
Yes, correct.
That was very cool.
Couple of us had our 15 seconds of fame, and that one of the angles was picked up by the wire. And so there was a couple of recognizable faces in the far background. Obscured by you and the president in front of them, but they're there.
Well, all right, Andrew Kent.
And I just, I just wanted to add, I know with the activities going on at Preble, the ability to make that happen required a lot of flexibility from the other high schools, because some of the indoor activities are having to be played and practiced at our other high schools. So another shout out to the activities directors for being flexible and making that happen, because that's a lot of work. Yes. All right. Thank you, Lokeen. Next, we have our legislative liaison report, and I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thanks, Brenda. Very quickly, I'm just going to mention there's a couple of WSB events coming up for board members administrators. If you're interested, you can get them on your calendar. The annual WSB regional meeting in Green Bay will be October 7th at the Rock Garden at 6 o'clock. There will be reports, John Ashley and myself will be giving reports. And there's an additional program that you'll be getting some information on. There's also going to be an election. I don't know if I have competition yet. We'll have to wait and see if anyone else will be running as region three director. And then there will be from 4 to 6, there is a pre-meeting workshop. That's an additional registration. For Green Bay, it will be the legal roles and responsibilities of school boards, which will provide an overview of key areas of Wisconsin law, including open meetings, public records, conflicts of interest, liability and risk management, and a board's powers and duties. And that would be 4 to 6 also at the Rock Garden. And I think we'll be getting information later, and those who wish to go, Sandy will register you. And then on Saturday, November 8th, is the Legislative Advocacy Conference. And this will be in Stevens Point. I think this will be obviously very timely, leading into the next legislative session. And with all of the hot button issues certainly come up, such as possible expansion of the school voucher program, special education vouchers, whole charter school process, report cards and accountability, Common Core, there's all sorts of issues. So if you're able to, I would encourage people to attend that, because I think that will be very timely. So that's November 8th in Stevens Point at the Holiday Inn. And unless anyone has any questions, that concludes my report.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Next, we have district events. I know we have recently received the list of all the open houses in the district. Some that'll be going on mostly next week, although I think high school registration starts this week. And then I don't know if there's anything else anyone would like to announce?
I think if I could, just to echo that, for those who are connected to the Preble community, to make sure that they have the dates coming up, that, you know, the teachers will be coming back the week of the 8th, but on the 11th and 12th will be the registration. And we just need to share that out in multiple languages and make sure that all our families are aware. And all the communications departments doing a really good job with that. And then the students will start back on the 15th. I, I think that the amount of work that, to prepare that school has been just extraordinary. And I know it will be a very good place. Our facilities department and, you know, our own, our own folks have been working around the clock. So very grateful. I see Mike standing alone there, and Alan Wagner, and Lori Blaisley, and Mark Smith are at the table every day. So grateful for that.
Excuse me. Right now, the Preble counselors are housed here. Is that correct?
That's accurate.
And what are, and what are they here for? Are they enrolling students? Have students wanted to or check their schedules?
Yes. And they're, they're looking at schedules. And again, with the announcements tomorrow, Mr. Smith will be providing more details about the schedules and the, and the plan to move forward. We talked about the minutes and the days and how that will proceed during the press conference. And they will have to do some, some, a lot of, some a lot of adjusting and things. But we, you know, really kept in mind as we were moving forward with the schedule, trying to, you know, the least amount of disruption and the best educational experience we could. And also keeping in mind children who aren't going to be eating because maybe they are being served at school, and also keeping in mind things like, you know, how does, how does a schedule with time change disrupt family? And some who rely on daycare, and people who rely on high school babysitters on, on days when kids aren't in session and so forth. We've had a lot of conversations, so, to get rid of, you know, to get, to get moving forward. So those are my district events.
Brenda?
For the sake of the public, I'd like to announce that the East Advisory Board is hosting a chamber music evening at Archetype on the 27th at 6:30 PM. So some of the best chamber music, and everyone is welcome. And anyone interested, you can contact me for tickets.
Anything else? All right. Next, we'll move to our system reports. Katie Maloney's going to do hers in 30 seconds.
I am. I won't even need the minute. We had no discussion items. We have no action items, and that concludes my report.
There you go.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you.
And next, we'll move to our organizational support facilitated by Chris Wagner, and he won't do it in 30 seconds.
We're not so lucky here. Okay, how could this?
You've opened yourself up to comment, but I shall refrain. Moment of self-control I don't always have. Thank you. Just pulling your leg a little bit. Under action items, if I may, recommendation is the purchasing policy number 672, and purchasing and bidding procedures rule number 672, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any questions?
It was discussed thoroughly previously, so.
All right. Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blackett?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Next recommendation is that the performance contract, contract with Nexus Solutions LLC, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Blackett?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
And now we have action items under human resources. The first one being that the 1.0 coordinator of ELL programs position, 12 months salary group 10, range 78 K plus to 91 K plus, and the associate job description as presented be approved.
Second.
This is the same job description we discussed at the work session meeting, and we made a few changes based on board suggestions. And it is a brand new administrative position in need, mostly because of the size of our ELL program and the support that our principals need.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Blackett?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Next recommendation is that the transfer of Tony Lucia, English Language Art Learner's Program Coordinator at the district office, 10 months, at a salary of 56 K plus to Coordinator of English Language Learner ELL Programs at the district office, 12 months, a salary of 78 K plus, group 10, 86 percentile, prorated to 57 K plus for the, at the 2013-14 rates effective October 6, 2014, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blackett?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Tony's here.
Next recommendation is that the 1.0 coordinator of Charter Schools position, 12 months at a salary group of, salary group 10, 78,000 K plus, range through 91 K plus, and the associate job description as presented be approved.
Second.
This is a job description that Mark Smith worked on. And it is really an exciting time because we now have a formalized person who administratively will oversee the John Dewey School as well as any other charter programs that, that we're working on. And the individual that will be considering in the next motion is exceedingly committed to charter schools. And he's just excited about this.
All right, Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Blackett?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Next recommendation is that the transfer of Molly O'Neil, teacher at John Dewey Academy of Learning, 10 months at a salary of 51 K plus to Coordinator of Charter Schools at John Dewey Academy of Learning, 12 months at a salary of 78 K plus, group 10, 88th percentile, prorated to 68 K plus, which is the 2013-14 rates effective August 19th, 2014, as presented, be approved.
Second.
I'd just like to say that Molly O'Neil joined the district in 2007, and pretty much for the career, as you, as you look at her resume, she has been working with students who are in need of alternate programs, and that's really where the commitment lies. She couldn't be here tonight, but I'm sure you'll be speaking with her over the next year.
Sandy?
Blackett?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Next recommendation is that the 1.0 manager of facilities grounds position, 12 months at a salary group 12, 60, range being 62 K plus to 72 K plus, and the associate job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blackett?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Next recommendation is that the transfer of Joshua DePaul, lead groundskeeper at the district office, 12 months, $27.34 per hour to manage a facility grounds at the district office. 12 months salary group 12 at a salary of 68 K plus, prorated to 58 K plus, 94th percentile, 2013-14 rates, effective August 19th, 2014, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Blackett?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
The next, the next recommendation is, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Next recommendation is that the executive assistant slash paralegal position and associated job description as presented be approved.
Second.
This is, this is our first position of this nature. We have an ideal candidate who has over 20 years of paralegal experience to support our district legal counsel, as well as this person also support our executive director of Special Education.
I'm going to make a comment before we vote. Just our general public, every law and everything in life tends to have pluses and minuses. In our system, in our public school system, we have quite a bit of transparency. And just about anyone under the sun can request records from the district. To provide those records is very labor intensive, and that's one of the reasons this position has been approved.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blackett?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Next recommendation, next recommendation is the transfer of Ellen Greger, Level 5 clerical at the district office, 12 months, a salary of $21.10 per hour to executive assistant slash paralegal to the executive director of Special Education Legal Counsel at the district office. 12 months at a salary of 51 K plus, prorated to 44 K plus, 100th percentile, which are the 2013-14 rates, effective August 19th, 2014, as presented, be approved. of 51 K plus, prorated to 44 K plus, 100th percentile, which are the 2013-14 rates effective August 19th, 2014, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Lecker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Ellen is here.
at Baird Elementary School, 11 months, salary group 8, at salary of 91,000 K plus, 98th percentile, to Elementary Principal. At Eisenhower Elementary School, 12 months, salary group 8, at a salary of 99 K plus, prorated 98th percentile, 2013-14 rates, effective August 19th, 2014, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
The next recommendation is the transfer of James Delane Carpenter of the district, 12 months, $33.99 per hour to Manager of Facilities Maintenance and Safety/Security at the district office, 12 months, salary group 12, at a salary of 68 K plus, prorated to 58 K plus, 94th percentile, 2013-14 rates, effective August 19th, 2014, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Next recommendation is that the employment of Ernest Chancellor as Associate Principal/ Activities Director at Franklin Middle School, 11 months, at a salary of 79 K plus, Group 9, 88th percentile, prorated 2013-14 rates, contingent upon successful completion of the pre-employment steps, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Next is the recommendation, is the recommendation that the employment of, I'm sorry, is that person here?
No.
Nope, I'm sorry. The employment of Amy Calionin as Associate Principal at Howe Elementary School, 11 months, at a salary of 72 K plus, Group 10, 88th percentile, prorated to 13-14 rates, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Lecker?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. And Amy is here.
Next recommendation is that the employment of Lucas Lechner as Associate Principal/Activities Director at Lombardi Middle School, 11 months, at a salary of 79 K plus, Group 9, 88th percentile, prorated to 13-14 rates, contingent upon successful completion of the pre-employment steps, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
The next recommendation is that the employment of Erin Manders as Elementary Principal at Kennedy Elementary School, 11 months, at a salary of 89 K plus, Group 8, 96th percentile, prorated to 13-14 rates, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
And the next recommendation is that the employment of Shiba Maze as Elementary Associate Principal at Nicolay Elementary School, 11 month, at a salary of 72 K plus, Group 10, 88th percentile, prorated 2013-14 rates, contingent upon successful completion of the pre-employment steps, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Lecker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Next recommendation is that the employment of Michael Sheehan as Elementary Principal at Baird Elementary School, 12 months, at a salary of 93 K plus, Group 8, 92nd percentile, prorated 2013-14 rates, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
And our last recommendation is that the consent items as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
All right, thank you, Chris. We do have a closed session, so I'll read the motion for that. Special Board Meeting Close Session is scheduled for Monday, August 18th, immediately following the adjournment of the regular Board Meeting at 5:30 PM at the District Office Building. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.251(f), considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where patriarchy applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involves in such problems or investigations, to wit personnel matters. And pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit negotiation of collective bargaining agreements. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, to wit employee compensation. The meeting will begin an open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.